Zoning Commission Meeting, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
You want to go ahead and pull, pull the, pull that up?
Yeah, I already, I already did it.
Yes? To run, these are strange animals. They've never existed before, you know? Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the City of Pineville Zoning Commission. Mr. Zucker, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Workman, would you call the role?
Commissioner Carter.
Whoa. Here. Turn that down.
Commissioner, Commissioner David.
Here.
Commissioner Zucker.
Here.
Commissioner Mobley.
Here.
We have a form, thank you. Members of the public and of our zoning commission, we have four items on the agenda. I think two of the items are contingent on the other two, so how we discuss these items. Let me explain to those in attendance how the zoning commission works. The commissioners will address each petition. I'll ask the petitioner to come up to the podium and state their name and address for the record. Tell us a little bit about why they're, what their petition is about, what they're trying to do. And then I'll ask if there's anyone in the audience or the public in attendance would like to address any comments. If they do, we'll address those and commissioners will deliberate and try to come up with an opinion to make a recommendation to the city council. The, uh, the first item, and I think we'll handle one or, so if, if, if we come up with a favorable recommendation for one, we will, I'm going to ask Mark Vilar, I think we will table the second item, which is kind of a companion request to the first one. And then we will go in then to number three, and if number three is favorably considered, then we would go into number four. So I think that's how we're going to do it. So this first item is a petition, the first item is a petition from Leatherman Aviation LLC, P O Box one-three-three-five-five Alexandria. It's related to property location at three ninety-three, and three ninety-seven, four oh-one, four oh-three, and four fifteen Hickory Street. It's currently zoned R-two, and he's requesting the zoning to go to R-two Mobile Home District. It's to allow these lots to be included in the mobile home overlay to allow for mobile home placements, including a variance for mobile homes to be either privately owned or rented. And I think, I thought there was maybe a discussion, and we'll talk about this with the petitioner, about the age of the mobile homes. So, Mr. Leatherman, I see you're here. Mr. Leatherman, come up, please state your name and address for the record, and let's start this.
Bill Leatherman, twenty-four forty-five Military Highway in Pineville.
Mr. Leatherman, tell us about what, what you're doing over on Hickory Street and about your property and your development.
Yes, sir. We purchased that a number of years ago. It was in a really dilapidated condition. We've upgraded all of those single-family mobile homes. We try to provide affordable housing mainly for families with children. We feel like we've definitely upgraded that area. It was originally outside the city limits, and during the Mayor Fields administration, it, they asked me to bring it into the city limits. I didn't know anything about a mobile home overlay district. Whether it should have been brought in or not is not part of the discussion here, but it was brought in, knowing that they were rental units. But now I'm kind of hamstrung at this point. I have two vacant lots that I cannot utilize, because with the, the current ruling, that they're not supposed to be rental units, and then there is a rule that they have to be five years or less, which with the increased cost of mobile homes now, makes it very cost prohibitive. So what, the things that I do bring in are nicer units. You know, we, we build porches on it, we provide outbuildings for people's personal items and everything. So what I've requested is either we de-annex them back out of the city, which would solve my problem. It would increase the utilities, obviously, for the tenants. Or we make it part of the mobile home overlay district and increase the age, maybe up to at least ten years of age, that a mobile home could be put on those lots.
Mr. Leatherman, um, the administration is very aware of what you've done on that property compared to what it was, compared to it is now. And I've heard nothing but compliments about how the property has greatly improved since your ownership. Back, I was involved in, when we brought that property in for the commissioners, twenty or thirty years ago, I don't remember how many years ago, we were rather naive. We thought when we created this mobile home overlay district that we could say it was for owners only, not rental. And, and it never has been. It has always, they never stopped changing. We just thought that's how it would be promoted. And then the years went on, and everybody just acknowledged that, that just never worked. And it, it was, it just never was feasible. We couldn't enforce it, it wasn't a big deal, and when you're in a mobile home park, it goes on. The, um, so the petition is that you would, that, for this particular, and we're not going to upset the, the apple cart, but for your development, you're asking for us to include it in the mobile home overlay district, but with a stipulation that you do allow rentals and you could use units from five to ten years of age.
Yes, sir.
The, if we don't approve that, and he's asking from a business perspective, would we consider to de-annex? And, and I, I will tell y'all that I don't think the administration is for de-annexation. We have police control, we have an opportunity to keep it. That way, it, he does get a lesser, I mean, from the city's perspective, if we de-annex it, we're going to get more money from water and sewer probably than we would get from our property millage, but it's just not how you build a city. You build a city not by de-annexing, and I'd say if we de-annexed, it'd be the first time I've ever heard of a de-annexation in our city, in our city. So, um, that's just some comments, I, I think, how we got here. Commissioners, you have any questions? Mr. Leatherman, any thoughts?
Well, when, I was part of that.
Probably were, Marvin, you and I probably were.
And, and the thought was, or the situation was, that people that own a mobile, mobile home wanted to move to Pineville. But... We didn't really have a place to put them. So what we did was, we made a, we made a district and said, okay, you can move to Pineville and bring your trailer, but it's got to be in this neighborhood.
And we, and we thought that people would own a mobile home, and in that mobile home park, there were people that owned them. And that kind of gave us thinking, oh, this is going to be an ownership thing, but as, and, and it got worse and worse, and older and older, and the people that owned the trailers there didn't fix them, they died out. And then Mr. Leatherman bought the property, and so here he was with this dilemma, how do I make this thing work? So, um, any other questions of Mr. Leatherman?
No.
Can I say one other thing? As an example, if you ride through that area, okay, the end of Hickory Street runs into Crepe Myrtle. There is a dilapidated mobile home park right there that is in the city of Pineville, and it is in horrendous shape, okay? It's exactly what you do not want in the city, okay? But currently, because I've talked with the owner, okay, he can't even sell it. He can't do anything with it, because right now, they're all rentals, okay? He can't bring new ones in, he can't do anything with it to even try to make it better. So basically, the rule has kind of hamstrung any owner in this type of situation. And his are almost uninhabitable, so it's exactly what y'all do not want in the city. The grass is this tall, there's abandoned cars, it's absolutely, you know, something that, that is not the vision for the city, for sure.
I think it was the law.
Is that in the city limits, that other little place over there?
That one is in the city limits.
In the city limits?
Yes, it is.
I think it was this, what we'll call the law of unintended consequences. When we wrote it, we thought we were going to be awesome, and we really had this thing under control. Twenty years goes by, and we didn't have it thought out, so.
So would it impact, just question, would it impact the unsightly mobile home park to have more freedom if we approve a mobile home overlay in your area?
Absolutely, because currently, currently, that area, my area, and the part across the street, does not allow, number one, does not allow rentals. So we're not supposed to be renting them in the first place. And I even tried to put a brand-new one on one of my vacant lots, and was turned down because of that. Because, you know, a brand-new mobile home, that was like fifty thousand dollars. I just tried to get it approved, and it wouldn't get approved. So, you know, that man across the street, you know, if we had this ten-year-old variance, because most, most of your mobile homes that are within ten years old now, you know, they have vinyl siding on them, they have shingle roof, they're built so much better. A lot of people think mobile home, they think, you know, those nineteen seventies and eighties mobiles homes, right? And no, that is not what y'all want being brought into the city. But this would allow that man across the street, whether he decided to upgrade it, or wanted to sell his property to someone else that wanted to do it, would have the ability then to upgrade that area. But right now, we're hamstrung, we can't do anything.
Let's, let Mr. Vilar raise his hand, but let me, I think this petition is only for this property.
I know, I know.
But it could start opening the door, we're learning, the calculus could be that we might, and what we might have to do, and I'm going to let Mr. Vilar, he wants to say that. What, we've been having our arms around this thing, we knew this is out here for about three months. We've been dealing with it, saying, maybe we look at our ordinance, how do we improve it? How do we put a little committee together? We had one meeting of a committee to discuss the whole unified development ordinance of the city, and that's all we got to, and then we got into other things. So I think we're going to have to address this, figure out the right thing for Pineville. Mr. Vilar?
So, let me address that for a second, if you'll mind. I just want to be sure, Mr. Leatherman, I think I'm correct in this. The, um, the next item, the second, the next item, the four seventeen, four nineteen, fourth twenty-one Hickory Street, the same issue, correct?
Absolutely, I have them in two different LLCs, absolutely.
Okay, I got it.
The discussion is the same for all of these properties?
But the one they're talking about across the street is not Hernandez, that's some other, that's a third owner.
That's, that's a separate owner.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, let me take it from legal perspective, right? So right now, what we're discussing is the potential expansion of the mobile home overlay district, with the variance within that. I'm going to tell you that's a bad idea, okay? I'm going to tell you the recommendation from ca, from council, that if we're going to allow variants of any type, so property-specific variants for these locations, that if the answer is yes, we're going to have, I think, ten years or less, mobile homes, it can be renters or property owners, and whatever other restrictions are appropriate, then that's, would be my recommendation from legalists, have a couch. You don't have to do that, obviously, but not, my recommendation would be to not expand mobile home overlay district, because that gets me into all kinds of other potential legal issues. And when it comes to variances and things like that, they're all on a case-by-case basis, depending on the location and the intent of the property owner. We expand it, I may run into issues in all of other areas that are currently in the mobile home.
Okay, Mr.?
I don't want to individually create that.
Help me work myself out of this. There's likely a majority of people on the board, I may guess, that might, I can usually tell by the questioning, that we might support this for Mr. Leatherman and, and Mr. Hernandez, the subsequent property owner. We know that they are in business related, that likely it would be recommended. If that is the case, what are you telling us to help not make a legal problem for you? That this variance be for this property? I think that's what we're doing. Do y'all?
It's a residence issue, it's case-by-case, it's specific to this property owner and his request, and the thing that he's planning to do in this particular location, if that's acceptable, I'd say a property variance.
And I think, I, personally, I would almost prefer a case-to-case till we can get our arms around this.
If, if legally, it should be case-by-case.
Okay.
In this instance, it's not.
So the petition is okay, as written?
Yes, you're just going to make a recommendation that instead of the petition, this is your recommend, that's going to, your recommendation would be not to do a mobile home overlay, but that to allow this variance on this particular piece of property, going to be after the council to decide that.
Okay.
It would look like you may not be, I want to be sure and clear.
Can I, to get this, if we don't put ourselves in a bind, then we can just recommend a variance for this particular property for the two items he's asking. They be rental, and that they be from five to ten years, and we're good.
And whatever other?
That's the two stipulations, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was talking about porches and other things, so.
That's, that's his.
Whatever, whatever other stipulations, but as opposed to expanding the mobile home.
Got it, okay.
I don't have to apply those rules as well, I can figure it out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Leatherman?
He, he does have a nice, a nice piece of property.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition?
I got a question, I don't think I'm in opposition.
Yes, ma'am, tell us your name, please.
Rose Marie Norton.
Rose Marie Norton, okay. Ms. Norton, where, what's your address?
My residential?
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty-three-ten Jefferson Highway in Pineville.
Twenty-three-ten Jefferson Highway, yes, ma'am.
Okay. It sounds like we've got a law that we're just kind of turning a blind eye, because it's supposed to be for ownership. So if this is actually not what's happening, perhaps the law can stand for ownership, but the variance is for using this property for renting, which is what you want to do. And if you're an owner that comes in, you have to build something that's more, more late, more current, five, five years or newer. You don't have to, I don't think you have to change as much.
The, and this is just specific at this point for his particular development? I think that's what we're trying to get at. And, and he had a, like he said, he did come in several months ago with a brand-new mobile home, and we told him he couldn't move it in there. We started reading in the ordinance and said, man, we've got ourselves in a bind here, so he couldn't even bring a new one in because of this requirement, and, uh...
Because of this requirement?
Because it was going to be for rental. Yep, and, and in the realities of it, they're all rental in there already.
They are.
Yes, yes.
So I think this is the ten years of last, so it would cover the new one.
Yes.
So if you put new mobile home there, then that would, it would be covered, still?
Yeah.
Yes, I agree with that. For ten years or less. Okay, um, Mr. Leatherman, you can have a seat, unless you have any other comments?
No, thank you. We've been working on this since November of last year, so I do appreciate us coming to a resolution.
Okay, uh, let the record reflect, is there anyone who would like to offer any more comments, or either objections or statements? Okay. Let's, uh, close the public hearing side of this. What's the wishes? Do y'all have some opinions? Let's talk through it.
So we're combining the Leatherman Aviation and the Hernandez Homes as one?
No, separate, Hernandez.
There has to be two entries, right?
I just want to clarify that it's the same.
It's the same situation, sure, okay.
Would the chair, would entertain a motion to approve, and let's just say what it is, it's, see if I can get this right. It's to, uh, what we're going to recommend to the council is to approve a variance on properties listed, owned by Leatherman Aviation, for the lots listed from three ninety-three, three ninety-seven, four oh-one, four oh-three, and four fifteen Hickory Street, to allow them to be used for rental units with the trailer's age being no older than ten years of age when they're placed on the property. Mr. Vilar, is that safe? Okay, that, if we would entertain that motion, then we could move forward without hopefully upsetting the apple cart for the rest of the city.
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Mobley has offered that motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
There's been a second offer. Any further discussion? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank y'all very much. Now that, that, that particular item, I would like to, um, take a motion to table item number two. Mr. Vilar, would that be correct? The zoning commission would like to, would y'all entertain a motion to table item number two related to the topic of de-annexation?
Why are we tabling it and not just canceling it? And not just canceling it, why do we have to table it?
Because y'all are just a recommending body.
Gotcha.
Once we get the council, if that ordinance is approved, then it will make, just one of them would then, maybe move, but he would withdraw.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, okay.
Well, what do you want us to do?
So I think table.
Their companion, I, I think if one passed, when, can we just?
No, we have to table.
No, we'll just table.
Table, okay. When I present to the city council, do I tell them it's table? And they?
You can tell them that if this is approved, then Mr. Leatherman's going to table it or withdraw.
Okay, he'll be there with me.
I'll be here with you.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, motion and second. Call for the question.
So, to be clear, we're having a hearing here with the zoning commission, but this type of material is identical to what occurs at the council.
Mm-hmm.
If there needs to be opposition, it's based on that person at the council meeting as well.
Okay.
So if for some reason, variance wasn't adopted, and the de-annexation would be taken up at the council.
Okay.
If it was adopted, then Mr. Leatherman of the council continues to table it or withdraw.
Okay. So let's, uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a petition to expand the mobile home overlay district. Let me find my petition.
Is that this? It's in green.
Yeah, they, they give me a, a little one that reads a little more than that, and I might have to take that one, Ms. Mobley. Okay, I'm going to take it off that one. I've got it, okay. This is a petition to expand the mobile home overlay district to include properties located at four seventeen, four nineteen, four twenty-one Hickory Street. And it likely has the similar wording, to allow for mobile home placements, including a variance for mobile homes to be either privately owned or rented, and that the mobile homes be allowed to have a, a life, or whatever, an age of ten years or younger, okay? I think that's, is there someone representing Mr. Hernandez? Mr. Leatherman, would you call him, state your name and address, again?
Bill Leatherman, twenty-four forty-five Military Highway, Pineville.
Okay, and, uh, is the conditions of this petition exactly the same as the one earlier?
Absolutely, we just, two separate LLCs, we own all of that together.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions for Mr. Leatherman? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition or have any other comments? Okay.
I'd like to recommend that we approve a variance for these specific properties for rentals, ten years or newer, I mean, ten years or?
Thank you, there's a motion.
Zero to ten years.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There is a second. Is there any further discussion? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The next item I'd like to, the chair would like to see, um, a motion to table item number four related to the petition of de-annexation.
I'll put, I'll make a motion.
Ms. Mobley, thank you, we have a motion. Second, Mr. Zucker, you good with that? Zucker, seconds. Any further discussion? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank y'all all, this is a recommending body, we will present the same, I'll make my presentation to the city council when they convene at five minutes. Uh, Mr. Zucker, to ask something, just, we have a few moments, and this will be for Mr. Basco and the mayor. Mr. Basco and Mr. Vilar. What is happening with Bed and Breakfast is in our community. Marvin has one in his neighborhood, not that he's against it, no, he doesn't know if it's a good thing or a bad thing. I understood that Bed and Breakfast, we're challenged in permitting, operating them, enforcing them. What is the current story? Is anybody?
Bed and Breakfast or Airbnb?
Airbnb.
Is that a difference? Airbnb? How about an Airbnb?
Airbnb, there's currently no permitting, they have to report taxable income, just as a...
Airbnb, there's currently no permitting, uh, they have to report taxable income just as a hotel would. Through that, as we identify Mr. Humphreys, as we identify them throughout the city, there's nothing that requires them to report to us. They have to report to the tax office, registered tax office. As we identify them, Mr. Humphreys through financials from the tax office, they're sure that we're getting the proper taxes off of it as a hotel, but there is no zoning specific requirement, to my knowledge, of that Airbnb.
Well, the, the one I'm specifically, is two house numbers down the street from me, and, um, I'm in an R one neighborhood.
The question was, is, is Marvin posed the question, and guys, I think these are, if you read the, I read The Advocate every morning, and, uh, these are troubling in other communities, they're bothered, because sometimes they turn into party houses. And we have one up in another subdivision, we had heard a lot of complaints on it, and the mayor's administration at one time sent a few policemen over to say, guys, if we get complaints here, we're disrupting the peace in the neighborhood. I don't think Marvin has any complaints on this, it's just, I don't think we have any ordinances that control, and these are new things. I don't even know if we can, there's, Mr. Vilar, there might be case law or what, and Mr., Mr. Humphrey, what number are you?
I'm one twenty-four.
And one twenty-six? This is one twenty-eight Hudson. Mr. Humphreys, one twenty-eight Hudson, one twenty-eight Hudson. I'll give that to Mr. Basco.
Yeah.